Adam Lamontaine.
He had to introduce himself and introduce ourselves.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, zoning board of appeals. I'd like to take this opportunity, permission of the chairman, to introduce myself. Many of you already know me. I'm Adam Lamontaine, the municipal management fellow. I work alongside Carter Tarantino, the town administrator. I'm here tonight really just to introduce myself to you, let you know that, you know, feel free to stop in. Dennis and I just ran into each other the other day over at Reno's.
Yeah.
Was it? Ron and I spend a lot of time together over at town meetings, so. But the other members, if you would like to stop in the selectman's office anytime, feel free to do so. I would like to sit down with you, hear what you do. Now, I know a lot of what you do is, with this is a very important position you hold in the town with the zoning board. And I know you're all volunteers. It's great to see as many of you show up and be here and active in the town. So what I, I wanted to get some feedback more on how we can recognize volunteers. Because we see it so often in Templeton, a lot of, some people serve on two boards, volunteer at a time, and I think it's great. But we want to start recognizing the work of volunteers, maybe a volunteer of the year award, maybe do a plaque, perhaps maybe an award at town, annual town meeting, just some ideas. And I just wanted to get your feedback, really on what you think about that. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, you know, we had a stipend, I don't know how long ago it was, probably. I don't think any member except for.
Were you, Joe, were you on the board when we had a stipend?
I'm not sure.
A hundred bucks a year, a couple hundred bucks?
Oh, no, no, no. That was, and that's, and that's before, that's over twenty years ago, my friend.
Oh, yeah.
Because I've been on the board over twenty years, and you've been on it longer than I have.
Yeah.
But, um. We couldn't even get a Christmas party out of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, one of the last years, we were getting a hundred bucks or whatever, and the dog catcher needed some money, and what are we gonna get us? We, eh, we donated, eh, we take hours, take hours, give it to the dogs. We haven't gotten anything since. The town budget's been tougher and tougher ever since, I think.
Yeah, and that's why I, I wanted to kind of see what you thought about maybe perhaps doing a volunteer of the year, doing a plaque, would you think plaques a better idea? Or even doing something where you got recognized, anybody that gets selected gets recognized and then an award gets given.
I think just an acknowledgement, because I don't think there's enough people in town that know how many people actually work.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, donate their time, you know?
So a simple acknowledgement would be?
Yeah, list the people that actually do stuff like that, that volunteer their time, don't get paid.
I don't think we all need a trophy.
No, no.
No, 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 not, just, just one person.
We all want a trophy.
Well, we all want a trophy.
There's too many trophies given out these days. Everybody gets a trophy, no, no, we don't need that.
No.
So just one person being recognized, simple acknowledgement would be something that you would feel would be beneficial to the town?
I think just the committees themselves should be just acknowledged at the thing, you know?
Mm-hmm.
There are some people that think we all get paid.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there are.
Oh, yeah.
They don't, they're like, are you kidding me?
We're, I think we're about the only board that don't.
No, there's.
Well, there's a few more.
No, there's others that don't.
Why they don't? Do the selectmen get paid now, do they?
As it is right now in the fiscal year twenty budget, that would be correct, but once again, we, we, we were waiting.
Yeah. Because they used to and then they stopped.
The planning board doesn't get paid.
The planning board doesn't?
No.
No?
I thought the planning board did.
There's quite a few, there's quite a few.
I think there wasn't any, it's the sewer and the lights, as far as I know.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Yeah, the Warren article, it was just sewer commissioners and the board of selectmen, but, you know, that's how it is right now.
Yeah.
The board of selectmen and the advisory committee?
Correct. Uh, no, no, the sewer commissioners.
Sewer commissioners.
Yeah, maybe the advisory board, because they put a lot of hours in the advisory board do.
Yeah, and that's in the town budget. I'm not sure, I can't speak for Electric Light or the other various that aren't in our budget per se, so. But that's how it is right now, and, you know, I just want to thank you for all you do and this opportunity to speak with you, and if you come up with any other ideas, anything that, stop, stop in, say hi. More than happy to sit down with anybody and to talk about any ways that we can make the town a better place.
Good.
Alright, yeah, sounds good. Thanks for stopping in.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
I think that was a good idea.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
And hope to see all of you at some point stop in the office.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Next town meeting.
Next town meeting, we'll see each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next on the agenda. We've got a public hearing to consider a variance request from Sarah K. Smith of three ninety-two Otter River Road for the installation of a twelve by sixteen shed. I believe the variance is for setback, side setback?
Yes.
Alright, you wanna?
I've never, I've never been moved before, so.
That's okay.
Already to agree.
This is our first time.
It'll be easy, don't worry.
Um, just a, you know, just a courteous thing, I know we have the fifteen feet of variance from the property line. Unfortunately, with the way my plot of land is and the way it go, it steeps down in the back, it would just be kind of more of an inconvenience, possibly slide down the hill trying to park the motorcycles or something in the winter. The lawn, the lawnmower sliding down, anything like that, and it would just make it more convenient to put it on the side of the garage, which is close to the property line. I did get a letter of approval from my neighbor John Sorenson saying that he had no problems with it, that would be on his side of the property. I know in the letter that got sent out, it actually states, it's a typo obviously, but it states fourteen by sixteen shed, and it's actually a twelve by sixteen shed.
Okay.
That we purchased, and if we, we pushed it back, obviously, because we, we do want it to get the variance and, you know, do everything the right way. And if not, then we'll have to, you know, mark off the fifteen feet and put it down below. It's, it'll be a very, very inconvenient for us on the property itself, but if we don't get the variance, then that's where it'll go.
How much side setback are you looking for?
Um, well, it's, I'm not even sure amount wise. At least like three feet, three, like five feet maybe?
From the property line?
From the property line.
So you'd need a twelve foot variance?
Five feet, ten foot.
Well, ten feet, well, yeah, well, she, she's right, yeah, fifteen, well, fifteen feet.
So the closer the, the, because the only way I would be able to later on get equipment, like if I wanted to do anything in the back, because I have a big open area now, because the people I bought the land from, the house from, cleared the entire one acre lot, unfortunately, so now I have a lot back there. So if I wanted to get like a machine back there, I still need plenty of room to get something between that and out back like.
Between the shed and the garage or shed and the house?
Between the shed and the garage, correct.
How much room would that leave you approximately?
How much do you think?
Oh, it's plenty.
Oh, it's plenty.
Okay.
So you have twenty, if, if it's, it's a twelve foot wide shed?
Yes.
Five feet off the boundary.
Yeah.
Five feet off the boundary.
Seventeen feet away.
So then she's got twenty more feet, so she got thirty-seven feet or so.
The house is thirty-seven?
Approximately.
From the setback?
From the, would that be the western boundary?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, yes.
The only time the neighbor would see it was, would be in the winter, and it's, it's not, you know, your rickety shed or anything like that, it's got vinyl siding, it's not anything, it's, they just, they come and prep the area, the company does, and they come and they, the shed's already built, they put it down, and that's it.
What brand shed is it?
Uh, clodder farms out of Connecticut, so.
Well, it looks pretty nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, I mean, their, their quality is unbelievable.
It's like a she shed.
A she shed.
It will be my she shed. It will be. So just basically looking for the okay for that.
So is that one gonna burn down too, like the commercial?
If I had it my way, I'd just build a bigger garage with, you know, a whole nother section just for me, but.
How close is their house to the shed?
Oh. That's pretty far yardwise.
Yeah, feetwise.
Feetwise, um, not even, like, way far enough away, um, feetwise?
Just curious if it was like ten feet away.
No, more than a hundred?
Thirty or forty yards.
Thirty or forty yards, yeah, yeah.
It's all wooded down.
It's all wooded in between, yeah, the only time he would see it is in the winter, after all the leaves fall.
He's way over.
Yeah.
And this lot was his too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, for some reason, it doesn't show on that plan, but.
Yeah, where the house at?
Sorenson's, yep.
It's Sorenson now?
Sorenson.
Yeah, there was LaFave before, yeah, I remember.
Oh, that's LaFave's house?
Yeah.
Well, that's, they're next to LaFave.
Oh, you're next to LaFave?
He doesn't live there now.
You got that new house you built?
New house.
Oh, anyway, now I know where it is.
Yeah, he passed away.
Yeah.
Couple of years ago.
Oh, well, quite a while ago, yeah, but now I know where it is.
Yeah.
No, you wouldn't even see it then.
No.
No, it's pretty wooded down.
Yeah.
You gonna have a driveway going to it or just across the lawn?
Just across the lawn, yeah, and there, for some reason, it doesn't want to grow grass anyways, so, with the dogs, so it's like.
Very gravelly area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Water goes right through it.
Yep, sure does.
Probably put some clay down before you put your, uh, grass, aluminum. Can't grow grass this year.
Well, it's, it's actually.
Can't grow grass this year, can't grow grass.
It, it actually came back better than I thought, been, you know, we've been plucking away at it for, it's the second summer now, so it actually is getting really green and full, so. Learning the ways of the green lawn.
Yeah, you gotta fertilize those new lawns.
Yes.
So if you, eh, twenty, you have twenty feet, if you could squeeze it over, get yourself a little more, you know, seven feet, eight feet, something like that, could you, could you do that and get away with it or?
Over towards his side or towards my side?
Yeah, give, give like a seven foot or an eight foot buffer zone between the building and the that'll still give you room to drive, you know, that'll give you fifteen feet.
Yeah, okay.
That'll give you fifteen, sixteen.
I mean, it wouldn't be a hardship at all to be able to do what you need to do, just to give a little bit more space.
Yeah, no, I mean, that, that would be fine.
Your access door towards the front of the property, so we don't have to try and squeeze a bike in or something.
Nope, the double doors, the way the, um, the shed has set up, the six foot double doors would be facing the front, the street, and then the one door, single doors facing the garage.
If we, if you moved a little bit closer to the house like, uh, John said, then you wouldn't.
No, no, there wouldn't be an issue with the.
Have a problem with access into, alright.
Yeah, that might be a condition. Make sure the doors face.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Face, uh, south.
Street side, yeah.
South or and, and or.
Right.
And the east. Bottom left. Yeah. Alright, any, uh, questions? Any other questions on the board?
I don't have any.
No, I don't have any questions.
Open it up to the audience here.
Any neighbors?
No neighbors here, for against. Hotly contested, I see. Make note of that.
They paid their neighbors off, not they come.
Kind of like parking the shed.
Alright. No other questions?
No.
No. I guess we can close the public hearing?
Alright. Thank you.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We closed the meeting.
I'll second it.
I'll, Joe, whatever.
Discussion?
No, I got nothing.
Second.
Alright. All those in favor of closing this meeting, say hi.
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 We've closed the meeting at six forty-five. Close the public hearing, I should say.
Alright, we'll, um, we'll make a decision on this probably later on tonight.
Okay.
And we will, um, have it written up. Mallory's, when's Mallory coming back?
She'll be here tomorrow.
She'll be here tomorrow, oh, okay, she just can't make it tonight. Alright, so, um, we have, we have a few weeks to do it.
Okay.
Um, but she'll probably get it done sooner than that.
Okay, fantastic. We just, I wait for it in the mail or I can swing by or?
Yeah, you can swing by and check with her when she'll have it written up, that, if you're in a, if you're in a rush for it.
Oh, I just, I have them coming certain days, so that way.
Yep.
I.
But it does, it, it is a waiting period.
It's a clear state of mind, so.
There is a waiting period.
How long is that usually?
Twenty days?
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one, yeah, twenty-one days. That's just in case a neighbor is on vacation or something and didn't get, didn't get a letter or anything knowing that you're doing it.
Okay, or they didn't sign for it, because the, you had to sign for it, certified?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, then you have to record it with the registry of deeds.
Okay, record the shed?
Variance.
Okay.
Yeah, the, just the, the.
Just the variance, okay.
Then, then it'll be legit and, and, um, we all set to go.
Okay, awesome.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night. Moving right along. Next on the agenda. We got a hearing to consider special permit of ninety-four Crossroad USA Auto Recyclers looking to change of use to sell used vehicles. Do you have anybody here from USA?
Yes. Yeah, I need a for private for a special permit for the used auto, uh, auto car. For a lot of customer, he asked me for, and buy a used auto car, used car for, yeah, we don't have for, for, and dealer license, we only, uh, business right now for a used auto part. So I need to add one more and dealer license, I try for and sell used, uh, used car.
To, to sell used cars?
Yeah, used, uh, auto car.
And currently have a, a permit or your grandfather to use for, for selling parts?
Yes.
That's a class?
Class two.
That's a class three license?
Uh-huh.
And a dealer, used car dealer license is class two?
Yeah, right.
So you want to do both, you want to sell?
The parts and, and?
Vehicles.
Vehicles whole.
How many cars did you want to have, uh, you know, number for, that you can sell? I mean, did you want to have a car lot for fifty, did you want to have a car lot for five, you know, you know? You had to give a sub number, how many, how many were working for?
Between, almost fifty.
Almost fifty cars you're gonna, for used cars?
Uh-huh.
And you have a norm conforming lot now, if I'm correct?
Yeah, uh. Almost thirty-three and fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you limited to how many vehicles you can have on the lot?
Is there a limit, more limited?
On the used?
On used, on the parts vehicles?
No. So, we have like ten, ten acre that has, uh, to for the salvage cars.
If, um, does anybody have, on the board have, uh, their last, because they came to us before and they, and they didn't show up. Does anybody have the, because I think it was only good for either eight, uh, eight or ten or twelve cars was what they had the parking spots laid out for, and I just don't happen to have the paperwork with me. Have anybody from the last time they were here?
It says eight parking spots on this.
I think it was, it could have been eight, I, I think it might have been eight or twelve, I'm not sure of what it's, but.
Eight, I think.
Fifty cars is, you know?
Yeah, we, we, we got it for, uh, uh, almost for the thirty acre and the public. Uh-huh, for the before, we got another one for, and, uh, in Portia, he make it for, and, uh, almost, he.
Right here.
I, 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 yeah, I tell her almost for, and the thirty, he, uh.
I got twelve, twelve on here.
Yeah, minimum for the twelve.
Yeah, that's.
As you come up though, as you're coming from the street, you want to put them on this side and towards the house side, this is the house right here.
And whose house is it?
Uh, I'm not sure whose house is, is next door.
Is that right on the boundary?
That's the boundary, uh.
See, there's non-conformants down here, the driveway.
Variations.
Yeah.
Conforming?
Yes, that, that they don't have fifty foot.
Oh, they don't have fifty foot, really?
They got thirty-two, I think they said.
Mm-hmm.
Right in there.
The lot, but they have ten acres, is what he said?
Permit for ten acres? Salvage yard, but you have thirty acres, is that?
We got thirty acres.
Thirty acre total.
Thirty acre total, but the junkyard is approved for, for ten acres?
Yeah.
Does this represent the whole, your whole ten acres? This picture here, does that represent your ten acres?
His, his, his comes up this way. And his used car, his junkyard is on the right-hand side, up the, up the driveway.
Right, right here. Shows it coming up, there'd be a car lot.
Yeah, that's where he's proposing, huh?
And then here's the junk car lot, but doesn't really give boundaries or anything.
Yeah.
Where is actually the road? Right here, right there, okay, there's a gate, yeah. Yeah.
See if there's a clot somewhere.
There's, I've got a picture of it.
Seems like I remember before, because, uh, Simba Kelsey had, I thought it was over, he had the junkyard over here, seems like. It was coming in the driveway.
It's a house over, over outside too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You don't have this one?
I've got to have one, but it's looking like he wants to sell, you know, have like nine cars to be sold. Back here it says five to fifty.
Yeah.
Do you have a?
Yeah, you got nine, ten, eleven, twelve, one, two, six. Delivery vehicles, employee parking.
Yeah, so in the minimum for the, the twelve, the start up, and the vehicle.
Minimum of twelve you're asking for?
Uh, yes, start up.
And then?
Yeah. Yeah, little by, by little, a little, a little bit, yeah, almost like there, and, uh, and the parking, everything like that, almost fifty like that. And now, uh, minimum for the twelve, uh, for the used, uh, uh, car.
So this drawing here is your minimum?
Yeah.
And where, yeah, where's your property line? Over on this? The left side?
Uh, let me see.
Do you have a, do we have a map of the whole property?
Yeah.
You can left.
The house next door, huh?
Yeah, left.
Oh, yeah, we got this.
Yeah, left of hand.
There's an aerial map in the back.
Like, it's number three, there's a house right there.
Yeah.
Right now.
Is that where he's gonna have the cars?
I believe so, yeah. Do you know who, who the property owner is of this lot three?
Lot three.
Next door to you?
That'd be the, the one that have left.
I think it's, no, were you at the last meeting? Okay, so I thought maybe it was you, as you went up the driveway to the left, I thought maybe that was your house, you're on the right, okay.
You're on the right.
Alright, nice, you're alongside.
One forty-eight is what it is now.
Okay, this is an old.
So you're a Butt Hubbardston?
We're on the corner of Hubbardston and Croft.
It's two fifty.
Right in the corner?
Yeah.
So you have kind of a small lot?
We have five acres.
Yellow house, on the corner, yeah, I know exactly where you are, I live on South Main myself, so I go by, I go by you guys a hundred times, so.
So it must be this one right here, you think?
Okay. Huh?
Must be, they must be parked in this one?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're down here.
Forty-three, I think.
Yeah, they're down in here.
I hear it's forty-three.
Yeah, forty-three?
Yeah, he's forty-two.
Four square.
Yeah.
Yeah, little, little angle on the back. And how many acres is that, you say? That's five acres.
Currently, where you want to put the, the used vehicles for sale, is that permitted for, for the class two, or the class three junkyard? Or is that, is that part of the ten acres that's permitted, or is that not part of the ten acres that's permitted?
Not part of the ten.
That's not part, where are the boundaries for that?
For the, for the, for the vehicles, for sale?
The current permit?
Current permit.
Ten acres' boundary.
It's for the, for the right-hand side, when you, it's on the right-hand side of the ten acre for the, where the vehicle part of that.
This right here, this, this section.
The right-hand side of?
Yeah, right-hand side.
The driveway?
Yes.
So what's the left-hand side, just, it's just not part of the ten acres at all?
No.
So you want to increase the land use?
And it's non-conforming, yeah. The way you said, you, you have, you have it set up here for twelve car spaces on here, so that's what you'd be looking for, be selling?
Yeah.
I don't know how, I don't know how that works, drawn as far as stipulating. That'd be up to the planning board?
Well, you still have to get a license from the, from the selectman. For a.
For a class two.
For a class.
Two.
Two permit, not, class two sales license.
Yes.
So you're still gonna be going through the selectman for, for that, but you gotta get through zoning first.
Yeah, the house.
Yeah, but then, doesn't, don't they have to go through planning board too? They've essentially started a new business in a sense, aren't they? Is that what it's considered, or is it just change of use?
Well, it's not really change use, because this, this isn't in the permit for the existing lot three license. You know, that's a ten acres over, over on the.
Right.
Over on the right side, looking in.
So you're actually starting a new business on a separate piece of property, or separate, not, not a separate piece of property, but separate area. It's not permitted at this point.
No. Is, is there a limit on used cars dealers, like there is junkyards, do you know?
Yeah, I thought there was.
Yeah, yeah, there is. There's only so many licenses in town.
Right.
Adam just left, I wonder if he, I was gonna ask him.
Oh, he did, yeah.
Alright, um, any other questions from the board?
My question is, I don't think, I, I think what he's asking for, I think, is way over what we should be doing.
And I can't see really, well, you got the u, cars that you're gonna sell, we, I can't tell how close that's gonna be to the next house, to the next property. There's nothing showing that.
I'm kind of looking at two different maps here, I can't.
Yeah.
Plus, if you're splitting, if you're splitting a junkyard from this car lot, it's a, that's a separate thing, we're gonna know where that lot line is.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we got, we got no measurements, no.
No, this is just.
No, nothing, we're gonna have to set them up and probably have to come back to, give them some information so they can, uh, get all this, you know, how far are you gonna be set back, where's the property lines?
Yeah, like, sooner or later, we're gonna need a.
Survey.
Need a site plan.
Yeah.
A site plan.
I agree with you.
Do you want a pen, you can write it down, the things you're gonna need?
Uh, we don't have pen.
You know what, you want inspector?
Uh, we got a paper.
It says change, or substantial extension of use, which is what we're saying. Change from one con- non-conforming use to another.
That's what the building inspector's saying.
Right.
Yeah.
Change or extension.
Plus. Who is that? Can't be recognized.
I think definitely gonna have to have them come back with the, with the, uh, site.
With the site plan.
And, and boundary lines, and where, where you're splitting a car lot one side and a, and a junkyard the other side.
You probably check with, check with the selectmen, see about permits that are available in town, too. I mean, if, if there's no permits available in town.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that ain't up to us.
No, it's not, I'm just saying.
They don't wanna waste their time.
Yeah, well, I don't blame you, they have money.
Yes.
They don't, they only allow so many used car lots.
And I believe the selectmen need to issue this. Oh, that permit, I think they would. Issue a permit for the, for the class three, ah, class two, class two.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, they're checking all licenses.
But, you know, to me, it's like a, it's like, you know, there's so many legal licenses allowed, there's so many used car lots allowed.
Yeah.
And I don't know how many are, if there's any available, should find that out.
Should find that out before. I don't think there's any A's up, I think that one that, on Bowenville Road, he got the last one in town, but I think the twos, there may be a, maybe a two, I don't know.
I don't know.
But I know, last I knew, I talked to Mallory, the, the one was taken from, uh, from the guy on Bowenville Road, when they're gonna put that, you know, cop lease.
Yeah.
So he got, from where I just started, he got the last number one.
Oh, quite extra twenty?
Yeah.
What's number one?
Well, actually, he transferred his in, you got, you got a, I think he transferred from, I don't know, another town?
I, I don't know.
I wasn't sure how it worked out, but.
I believe the junkyard that was up on where Peas Farm is?
Yeah.
The one that's up behind, where you.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Near my place, that place isn't a junkyard no more?
I believe that's the guy that gave his license up, so on this, and the guy on Bowenville Road got that.
Yeah, you could be very well right on that.
It does say closed there, but then I, he had noisy every now and then.
I believe that's how it works.
And that's a, a class two license or a class three license?
I'm like, I'm not sure what he has. But I know that's the one they swap, they.
I thought that was a class two he had up there.
So they're not in business no more at all?
No, I believe, I believe that's the case.
What about all this stuff there?
Can't sell anything, I guess.
How long he's been there for years, has he?
I'm, I'm not sure what happened to him.
Probably died of old age. Sixteen.
So how long would it take you to get a, get a site plan done for us?
You probably want more than one week.
Oh, you want more than one week.
It's gotta be done, you know, it's gotta be done by an engineer and.
Yeah, surveyor's gonna take, they're all busy, that's gonna take a while to get them.
Oh, okay.
Plus, you gotta check with the selectmen for, if there's a license available.
Yeah, before you, you start.
Before doing anything.
Doing anything, make sure there's a license even available for you.
Yeah, there may be a list that you can get onto, you know, the waiting list and.
The site plan just doesn't give us enough information to where the boundaries are, and what you're trying to do, and what you have. So we need to have more information to, something like this.
Cause it's nice to know how close these cars are gonna, the, the, where you're gonna park them, it's nice to know how close you're actually gonna be to, to your neighbor.
We had a fence.
A fence for clothes, yeah, we got the fence.
Yeah, but that's what, that's what should be on the site plan, you know?
Stuff like that.
How far away from the neighbor's property it is, any fences you're proposing?
How far, yeah, where's the salvage yard located, and how far away are you from your salvage yard?
It's kinda like, like the last people over in here, they have, it's, it's got all the diagrams, uh, measurements, you know, so. You know, that way, like the last people, we could tell how far they wanted to put their shed, um, and that's kinda what we need, is to know exactly, you know, where the measurements are.
Your commercials, which is much more involved in what they were doing, just having a shed.
Yeah, I before I'm kinda here, so, uh, some of you told me, okay, site plan I do for my own, I don't know who you do, so.
Right.
I put on the area, okay, I put, I park in home in car like that, I say, uh, minimum, uh, under twelve, uh, maybe in a business going out, okay, we can, and then parking more like that.
Right, so you get either an engineer or a surveyor to get that kind of information, get more accurate to what, what it actually is. That's what you need to do, and before you spend that money, you just may wanna go to, like John was saying, just go to the selectmen to see if there's availability for, for another, right? Just make sure before you spend your time and money.
Oh, okay.
And then, take it from, then we have to take it from there, cause we can't make a judgment without the proper information.
Mallory was here, she probably knew, knows.
Knows a little bit about it.
Yeah, Mallory probably knows.
Oh, okay, okay, right now I got it. So I before, I don't know, I first time.
Right.
Is this, is this all one property, or is this split in half?
Customer for the Templeton town and neighborhood, he asked me.
Is this the studio that you have? Is this all one piece of property?
We cannot for sale a whole car.
So how, how are you splitting it to be a non-conforming lot?
I don't know how it went, I mean, how it goes.
Cause of the frontage, I guess.
Well, it's cause of the frontage, there's no doubt about it.
About thirty acres, so I don't know how the, like a site plan, the man, how, how it goes, how they draw the picture on there.
Yeah, there's probably no problem.
The frontage, they got nothing.
No, I know it, so, yours is all the depth, right, your front land is mostly deep?
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh. There's not much frontage.
So many customer, he asked me, huh, what program for, and the, you can, uh, maybe you project for not on dealer license, you are can for the sale for the used auto car. So, and the neighbor allow for he find a used auto part, he told me, so, uh, I'm thinking, I can, I'm pricing one more for the dealer license. We, we, uh, we can find, uh, sale for the used auto car like that.
Yeah, but it's gonna be on a completely different area, so I think, your, your site plan will cover drainage, you know, what you're doing for landscaping, fencing, lighting.
You'll need it to see the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, you're gonna need it.
For every step.
Every step of the way, so. So you should make sure it's covered, you know, your, the site plan you draw up, it covers the rules for, for all three bullets.
Oh, okay.
You know? The, the engineers will know, you know, they'll know what they, what they need.
Because it's my first time, so, uh.
It's okay, no problem.
Don't have any idea about it, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Understandable.
We have some abutters, if you wanna open up to them?
Sure.
You got any comments or concerns you'd like to address?
Yeah, John Thomas Cross Road, and I am opposed to having another non-conforming use there. The junkyard is grandfathered, and we understood that all along, and Simakowski was there before we bought our property. But to add, another non-conforming use doesn't seem in the spirit of zoning, of let's keep the residential areas residential. Um, it's a small little street, quiet neighborhood, absolutely no businesses there other than the two junkyards, and having more traffic and activity on that street doesn't seem in the spirit of the zoning that Templeton has.
How was the traffic up there now?
A lot worse than you'd think.
Is it?
Yeah.
I know, I know when the highway did the road over, and I was up there, I could see there was quite a bit.
Right.
Yeah.
And they come.
And then people, yeah, people come flying up from the Hubbardston Road, from Hubbardston side.
Yeah.
The road has that slight turn, they come flying around that corner in front of our house.
Oh, yeah.
Um, only have one vehicle roll over in front of our house, unfortunately.
I was out walking the dog the other day, and there was a truck that came flying around the corner, it was a car carrier that was going to this residence or this property, and it didn't bother to move over in the least, I had to get into the woods, this guy was flying around the corner, and I can only see that problem being compounded by adding more traffic or more cars coming in, or more vehicles looking to buy cars, coming, you know, coming as customers, so it's, it is a concern.
Get on the Bowenville Road now.
There is a new family that moved in that has.
Get on the Bowenville Road, I live on Bowenville Road now.
Also a concern.
I think you're right, I don't think we could do too much without a site plan and get, get some more information. Even at the table.
Yeah, continue it, um, you can do your homework, continue it.
Without a time, so.
Cool. Maybe a month?
A week.
What he should do is find a, put it in front of when he can get it done, and then he can let us know.
But Mallory.
Yeah, but we, we need to set a date, uh, Friday closing.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Friday.
They can extend it.
Ending the meeting.
Yeah.
They.
Yeah.
If you're not ready, you can extend it, you have to go back into the office and see Mallory.
We would, we would have to open that meeting.
Open it, then extend it.
And, and, and then extend it, so.
Yeah.
So we should probably go a month out, so if we get any other cases.
I would take a month out, cause if you're gonna get someone to survey, you, you're not gonna grab Zlock or somebody tomorrow morning, or even.
Yeah.
Two weeks from now, I bet. This is a busy time of the year, so, I'd say a month.
Wanna continue the public hearing for a month?
Yeah, I would think so.
Let's see how you.
And that way you guys have enough time, but, but if, if, I would think the best step for them to do is go to the selectmen first, and make sure the permit's available.
Okay.
Before you start laying out, digging into your pocket.
If you see, if you see Adam in the office there, he'll, he'll get the information for you.
Okay.
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 Thank you.
Um, Tuesday would be August sixth. And a. You won't be around?
I'll be around.
I'll be here, I should be too, unfortunately.
Yeah, I think so. August what, John?
Sixth.
Six.
Six.
Thirteenth, any better for, any better, any worse for the rest of you?
I won't be here the second week of August, I'll be here the first week.
You're gone for the first three. You're gone for the first three, so you.
Doesn't make a difference for the first of them.
Holy girl.
All right. Better use my vacation time.
Dave will probably be around.
All right, you wanna, um.
You don't want a job down there.
Make a motion, continue till, uh, August sixth.
I make a motion that we, uh, continue this to August sixth, uh, till we get more paperwork from you people, and.
Yes.
And, uh, anybody second it?
Second it.
All right.
All right, motion made and seconded.
Okay.
And any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 None opposed? So, public hearing will be continued till August sixth, at six thirty, in this building. And, so you'll try to get a site plan, get more information.
Yeah.
And, and the building inspector, he'll be able to help you with the, what you need, your engineer, you're gonna have to have an engineer to draw it up.
All right.
They'll, they'll be in contact with the, with the board, town building inspector, and figure out what, what needs to be on the plan.
Yeah.
And, um.
Yeah, because in that first time, I don't know, so, but now you give me the more, uh, information, it's much better.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and I think it's how much.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Very good.
Uh, could you just come, point out which lot was yours, which house lot? Yeah.
It's forty-three.
I wanna know the corner. It is forty-three?
Yeah, that's where I want.
I got forty-two. Forty-three's right there, that'd be five acres. It is theirs.
That's five acres, yeah.
It is that, that's five acres.
Yeah, well, if that's thirty.
That's because that's a state, that's state land right there, too, right, state forest, or town forest.
No, no, this is someone's house back there.
Oh, okay.
Two fifty and goes across the road is the Templeton.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think this is the old Simakowski place, right?
Yes, well, no, that's Beetlejuice's house.
Yeah, Simakowski.
No, he had, he had a house.
Oh, okay, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 that's the other, this is a new, yeah, that's right.
That's it.
You're right there, right in the corner.
Right on the corner, right.
Okay.
They put a stop sign there, didn't they?
Can you, but, nobody, yes, there's a stop sign there.
There's always, there's always been one coming this way.
But nobody ever sees it.
I've got a stop sign both ways.
No.
No, cause this is Hubbardston, right?
Yeah, that's Hubbardston Road.
Oh, that's Hubbardston.
Right on Hubbardston Road.
This is Hubbardston.
Yeah, I'm thinking about.
So, there's no stop sign here, at all, that's why they come flying, you see how that's rounded?
Right.
They come flying around that corner.
So you're right here, so that's my cousin's houses, right, one of these two lots.
So there's Murray and one's out.
Yeah, it's my cousin.
Oh, really, you know Elaine?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
People for metal for sale.
Yeah, so the Murray.
Yeah, he do over there, another car.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we got it, yeah, we got it here for, and a crossroad here, crossroad here, okay, you may be, you here area.
So the entrance is right there, you got a point down there.
We got it here.
Yes, that tiny little thing, right.
Yeah, another people, uh, we told a car here area, not through over there.
The Templeton State Forest.
Right.
Because here, that one for, and the Templeton Auto Park.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know that was Templeton State Forest, actually.
Yeah, on both sides.
He sell for.
Right.
Yeah, metal, another for the customer, he driving over there.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. Another people for the driving over there, for the metal for sale, everything, and the junk car, look for metal, another customer driving over there. So we got it for, and the customer here, not through over there.
He doesn't paying attention, so I didn't get what I'm saying.
Yeah, Hubbardston, we, Hubbardston Road, here in the cross.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it here, maybe you.
That's pretty good, huh?
There's another junkyard there, too.
Yeah, another, yeah, another junkyard for the Templeton Auto Park.
Down here.
Green lawn, give me a place to do my lawn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's right down, all right, you talking Hubbardston Road?
Yeah, a lot of people on the car are over there, maybe a lot of car.
They do metal and stuff like that.
So that's the house there that I was thinking about?
Yeah.
Yes, I just.
Thank you very much.
All righty, thank you, you, uh, they'll be notified, I'm sure, as about is splitting next, well, you know about it anyway, so.
Well, we have it in a month.
So we ought to get another, it, what if we get postponed, do we ever get another?
Well, I guess postpone at the meeting.
Yeah, we have to, we'll have to come to the meeting and, and if it's postponed, we announce it's postponed and make another date.
Okay, sounds good, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a very nice night.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, you're welcome.
Good night.
Yeah, you too.
Was it pink?
So he's showing, he's showing, he's showing coming up on the driveway, having them like right there.
Right, yeah.
So he's gonna, he wants it, he wants it right where these trees are.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know where the property line is.
Yeah, I don't either.
I think that guy has a point, my neighbor, about, you know.
Yeah, but the junkyards aren't going down his way, and there is another, there is a brick and place on that road.
Close the door if we're gonna.
Be more business, but I wasn't gonna say anything, I'm sure that doesn't.
Close the door.
Yeah, well, we, we need to, um, make a decision on the other one. On the first.
I'll make a motion, we let, we give the permit to him.
Boy, that's fast.
Wow, that's pretty.
Um, yeah, what do you, um.
With the, with the eight feet that we said that they'd have, they'd have to be eight feet from the line? Is that what we said?
Yeah, yeah.
They have about twenty feet in between, and you only need.
They got a huge yard that's, they got a whole acre, they could move it if they really wanted to.
It does drop right off though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the neighbor doesn't care, there's a lot of room.
Oh, there's a lot of room.
That's the whole thing, it's, the neighbor doesn't care, you know?
No.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, put a ladder up without going on the neighbor's.
I kinda thought that was a queer looking shed for fourteen by sixteen, I said.
Twelve by sixteen.
Yeah, I know, but, but they added, they added, uh, fourteen by sixteen in the thing.
But also, a shed is still a wooden floor, it's not foundation, uh, that stuff, so it's not something.
And it's probably at least a hundred feet to the, between the houses, where that's going.
Yeah, they.